Good evening. Before we get started tonight, I've got a special presentation I'd like to make, so I'd like to ask Dr. Maples to please come up here. Dr. Maples is the Executive Director of Blue Star Families of Southwest Ohio. It's an organization I've kind of fallen in love with over the last several years, so I've tried to help her out wherever I can. But they have an event coming up, and I'd like to just read a proclamation to recognize that. It says, "Whereas Blue Star Families seek to empower military families by connecting them with their neighbors, both individuals and organizations, to create vibrant communities of mutual support; and whereas Blue Star Families annually designates the week beginning the 4th Saturday in September and concluding eight days later as Blue Star Welcome Week; and whereas we commit to ensuring that military and veteran-connected families feel a strong sense of belonging to their local community and a sense of belonging is essential to the well-being and readiness of our military families; and whereas many military family respondents to the 2024 Military Family Lifestyle Survey reported that they feel a sense of belonging to their local civilian community, which is vital; and whereas we express our gratitude for the sacrifice made by the service members, transitioning veterans, and their families. Now therefore, I, Don Adams, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, along with the entire City Council and a community, do hereby proclaim Saturday, September 27th through Sunday, October 5th, 2025, as Blue Star Welcome Week in the City of Beaver Creek, and we encourage civilians nationwide to welcome military and veteran-connected families into their communities."
Thank you. Do you want to take a picture?
Yes.
Okay.
You want to say a couple of words? I know you're going to speak later.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much, Mayor Adams. He tries to attend a lot of our things, so we are really grateful for that. Blue Star Welcome Week is a real important and critical aspect of our programming here at Blue Star Families. We started our chapter five years ago, and Blue Star Welcome Week actually started that same year, and we've been able to really provide a sense of welcome and support, not just to our new military families who move into this region, but also those who've been here for a long time. So we really appreciate this and appreciate the council and you and all your support. So, thank you.
We'll hear a little bit more from Dr. Maples in just a few minutes. Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Litteral. Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Have a motion, please.
Motion to excuse Councilwoman Garcia and Councilman Litteral.
Second.
I have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Garcia and Councilman Litteral. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? I'll now turn it over to Vice Mayor Bales.
All right. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and a prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We pause this evening to give thanks for the many blessings that our Heavenly Father provides. Thank you for the democratic society we enjoy, which allows freedom, participation, and the ability to speak and be heard. Thank you for our local elected officials whose leadership and guidance help shape the success of Beaver Creek. Thank you for the dedication of our public servants, who serve faithfully and strengthen our community each day. Thank you for the amazing city of Beaver Creek, a place we are all proud of and we call home. Thank you for the passionate citizens who share their voices and invest their energy in making this community better. Please bless this council with wisdom, humility, and unity as we serve our neighbors. May our work tonight honor you and benefit all who call Beaver Creek home. Amen.
Now, we have an agenda before us. Any changes, corrections, additions?
Move we approve the agenda, Your Honor.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? We have no minutes for this evening, so we will go past that and pre-schedule speaker. Blue Star Families, Dr. Maples.
So I guess I use this clicker, right? Okay. My colleague Sarah was supposed to be here, but she unfortunately couldn't make it this evening. But as Don, Mayor Adams, said a little bit ago, I am the Executive Director of Blue Star Families, specifically the Dayton and Southwestern Ohio chapter. In addition to that, I'm a mom to two hidden helpers, although they are grown, and the wife and caregiver to my Operation Iraqi Freedom veteran husband, who I brought with me this evening, as well as a military family expert and advocate, a professor, Elizabeth Dole fellow for 2020. And I wrote a couple of books. But enough about me. This is Sarah, my program manager, and like I said, unfortunately, she's not here this evening, but we were able to bring her on last December, and she's been a real asset to helping us be able to reach farther with our programming than before when it was just me. Blue Star Families, our mission is really to create a model that works in the community and help shape and support a surrounding network around our military and veteran families. We did start as a national nonprofit in 2009, and then in 2019, we actually brought on our chapters. This chapter was built and started in February 2020. Since that time, we started with 500 households. Today, we are rapidly approaching 4,000. So we are rapidly growing, but we have a lot more people that we need to, and more families that we need to reach. Over the course of our growth since 2009, Blue Star Families as a whole has become the largest nonprofit serving military and veteran families, and we do this with a grassroots approach, which really does, or really has been instrumental since bringing on our chapters in 2019. To date, we have 13 chapters, but I'm excited to announce that we actually are going to be launching the Hampton Roads chapter in Virginia in spring of 2026, and more to come. One in Hawaii. You won't lose me, but it's tempting. But what do we do at Blue Star Families? This actually, I'm excited to share with you. We launched this, I think, two years ago. It's the Blue Star Neighborhood. And what this is, it's an exclusive neighborhood online. It's a community built just for our military and veteran families, and they can go there and not only enjoy the Dayton and Southwestern Ohio community within that neighborhood, but other neighborhood communities as well, such as maybe they're a military caregiver, maybe they're a military spouse. There's all kinds of things in there for them to connect to and find resources. And it's really important, especially for our military spouses who have an unemployment or underemployment rate of 45%. And that's true even here in the state of Ohio. So we have a whole careers program, which I wanted to talk to you about here just in a minute, but in our neighborhood, this actually is an old number. We actually have a lot more users than that. I think it's probably close to the 50,000 range now that are actively using our neighborhood. We have more work to go. It's still kind of new in the scheme of things, especially considering the number of members that we have nationwide. But this definitely is starting to see rapid growth, and our families are starting to find a lot of use in it. So here's, Blue Star Families kind of in a whole, or not in a whole, but as a whole. We have our chapters, we have our outpost. Our outposts are growing. Those are in addition to our chapters, so those might, for example, we have one in Indiana, which is kind of, we don't have a chapter in Indiana, but we partner with folks who create an outpost. And what they do is they are kind of an extension of our programming in areas where we don't have a chapter. You just heard about Blue Star Welcome Week. We do coffee connects. Another one that I'd like to, I won't highlight all these, but another one that I thought is really important is, one of the things that our families tell us is they don't have access to mental health, or they don't have access to VA programming, or other things that are essential. So what we try to do is kind of fill that void, and we do that through one program, our Blue Star Support Circles. And that is a kind of a cohort model offered at various times throughout the year, where individuals can come on, and it's not really counseling, but they find community with each other, and it's just a place for them to share struggles and things like that, and find support in other ways, and maybe even find extra resources that they wouldn't know about, other words, just by talking to people. So that, another one I wanted to point out is our Nurish the Service Event. The mayor's been to these quite often. We're getting ready to host another one in October on the 17th here in New Carlisle at Evans Family Ranch, and then another one in Butler County later this year. But that addresses food insecurity. Our families here in Ohio told us last year that 17% of them have either used or benefited from some sort of food distribution or food pantry, and that is really a significant food insecurity issue right here in our neighborhood. So we provide food, household items, hygiene items, resources, and things like that to really help lift them up and hopefully make that not an option or a need going forward. I'm going to skip through that one. Here is a kind of general map of where the blue stars are our chapters and the reds are our outposts, so that kind of shows you where those are covered. And then a little bit about our chapters. So in our chapters, last year, we had about 1,300 events. That's not here in this location. I would have been like really busy, but nationwide, nationwide, about 1,300 events. Reached over about 150,000 attendees and 96,000 members in our chapters. That is probably a lot higher now. Eight and 10 chapter members feel that they are more connected to their families. And I wanted to touch on that just for a minute. I had a family last year tell me, actually, it was earlier this year, tell me, they found out they had to PCS, and they are PCSing. We have two chapters in Florida, but where they were going, in Florida, they did not, they do not have a chapter. She was literally in tears telling me that she would have been isolated had it not been for Blue Star Families. So I did instill, tell her, "Don't sell your house. Rent it out and make sure you come back." And hopefully, they do that. But that just really kind of gives you an example of why it's so important to have a chapter here. This is some financial situations nationwide. 35% of our military-connected family respondents are finding it difficult to get by, or they're just getting by. 74% of our military-connected family respondents have to have two incomes, just to make sure that their family has, is, you know, for their well-being. This is our careers program, from our National Careers Program. I want to skip by this because I wanted to talk about what Sarah is putting into place as part of her, as part of her job here and part of her role. We are now taking our National Careers Program and putting it here in grassroots level for our military spouses, our veterans, and our caregivers. These are some kind of the key takeaways that she has in store to start this here very soon, I think, within the next month. Workforce development, LinkedIn training, opportunities for our military spouses and our veterans, working in partnership with Clark State. I believe it's the Rosie the Riveter, so that's right here in Beaver Creek, if I'm not mistaken. So we're going to work with them on getting them into new training and things to really support them. These are some top issues from nationwide. As you can see here, the military spouse unemployment, military pay, dependent children's education, these are all things that our families have raised concerns and stressors surrounding. As well as here, we show 50% of our military-connected respondents feel a sense of belonging in their civilian community. We obviously want to do what we can to raise that and get that as close to 100% as possible. So what about Ohio? 32% of our military spouses in 2024 told us that they were struggling with employment. 31% said they are struggling to find access to military benefits. And as you can see here, there is, only 24% of our military and veteran respondents feel that the civilian population understands their lifestyle and their issues. So that's not a lot. So a lot more work to do there, and that's really what Blue Star Welcome Week is all about, is to really kind of drive that number up and hope that more civilian neighbors can get involved and help raise that number and provide a sense of understanding. 17%, like I said, respondents said they had received food or visited a food pantry in 2024. So now I want to talk to you about Blue Star Welcome Week. How you can do your part. Connect with your chapters and outposts. Join the Blue Star Neighborhood. I invite all of the council to join the Blue Star Neighborhood. Make Blue Star Welcome Week part of your installation. Ask your schools and libraries to participate. I will say that we do have a good relationship with Beaver Creek schools. We're out in Beaver Creek schools a lot, and I think they're going to start or be part of our Nurish the Service campaign here coming up. And then also, if you know of other folks across the country, encourage them to get involved with Blue Star Families and their neighborhood as well. And I want to just take a moment before I answer any of your questions to kind of tell you what we have planned for Blue Star Welcome Week this year. So it does kick off on Saturday, runs through October 5th. We have a couple different things going on. One of them is we're taking our families, they can register to be part of a train ride through historic Lebanon, so the Lebanon-Mason Monroe Railroad. What we try to do is give our families unique experiences here because we want them to come back. We know that our active-duty families are only going to be here for two or three years, four if they're lucky. So while they're here, we want to make sure that they know what's unique about the community that they are living in, because we want them to come back, because Ohio does great things, and we, I think, I could be wrong, or like fifth or sixth in the nation, maybe seventh around veteran population, and that's because we do things right here when we support our veterans. We support them with employment. We have three, what, three VAs that we're situated in between Dayton, Columbus, and Cincinnati, so we want them to come back. And so showing them experiences while they're here and the strength and community and support while they're here, that's going to make them want to come back. And I hear that all the time from our families. They want to come back. The cost of living is low. They love, they love the Dayton community, so we definitely want them to come back. So that's one thing that we're doing. And then also, we are having an open house with our partners at TRI in Quine Therapy, so who doesn't love horses, right? So we are having a open house for them there, and we also will be out in some schools throughout the week. And I think we need to get the mayor on a canoe mobile, because we are going to be with Mad River Schools, doing a canoe mobile. We did this last year with them. We got seventh and eighth graders out in the canoes. And we're just looking forward to getting our families connected and showing them all the support we can during this week, and especially welcoming our new military families while they're here. So I appreciate your all's time. I hope I didn't go over 15 minutes, Debbie. But thank you all for everything that you do, and I invite you to come out to our events, join the neighborhood, and I look to forward to seeing you. Is there any questions?
Actually, I have a question.
Okay.
For military spouse employment, does your app accept job openings from companies who might be open to employing military spouses, or?
Yeah, so that's a really great question. So we have Laura, Laura Torres, who oversees our National Careers Program, and she has a whole community built inside the neighborhood, and oftentimes, she brings on organizations. Just to give you an example, I know she has a partnership with Discover, or has in the past, and other places like Google and places like that that she works with, and they come on and actually talk and take question and answers with our military spouses. So they can join that. I believe she still may have the Facebook page, but I think she's moved a lot to the neighborhood. So I definitely encourage our military spouses who may be struggling or transitioning to join the neighborhood and join the careers community, because Laura does a lot with those connections to help foster and build relationships. So, yeah, great question. Any other questions?
I just want to thank you for what you do. I've been involved with you for pretty much since the beginning, you know?
Yes.
Right, right at that. So, and the Nurish the Services, it's an amazing thing. These junior enlisted just don't get the benefits that they should, and I thank you for providing that for them, what little you can do. And then Therapy, Riding Institute, we're actually having them at Rotary on Friday. They're going to speak with us, and I have a history with them too, so I may come out there for that. I may ride a horse with you.
Yeah, yeah, that would be great. Yeah, so get you on a canoe and a horse. That would be great. I did, since you brought that up, in 2022, we did hold Nurish the Service at the Green, and that was the first one we ever did. And I have to tell you, we partnered with Home Depot. We provided our families, we've done that for a couple of years now with fire prevention kits and things like that. So it goes far beyond our food and household and hygiene items. We really try to meet needs on things that these families may forget, or just kind of get lost in the shuffle, because, you know, my husband and I moved after 16 years, and oh, boy, I don't ever want to do that again. But imagine having to do that every two to four years. I couldn't do that. So things got forgotten, things get left behind, and so whatever we can do to lift them up and give them a little bit of, a little bit of, you know, support is very well, very well-appreciated on their part. We hear that often, so. So thank you all so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, public hearing.
So the first item up for, on the agenda, is the public hearing regarding the NCA petition. That's a new community authority petition. I actually have a very, very short presentation for this. You'll be seeing two presentations today. Somewhere, a screen's going to show this. So for those of you who don't know, a new community authority is a new political subdivision where a private developer files a petition to create the new community authority, and one of the requirements is that the local government set a time and place for hearing on the petition itself. And I'm going to stop the presentation there, because that's the first thing we're doing, is having the hearing on the petition itself, which is required by statute. And then I'll have a second presentation where I'll go through the remainder of the slides for the actual local ordinance, which has to go through our own process under the charter. Yeah, and all the details of what the actual content of the NCA is.
And this is the state, the state-required hearing, so we will have a public input, but there won't be anything from council for the first session, but in the second one we will. So I'll open it up to the public now, so if you'd like to come forward and speak to it, please state your name, address, and you'll have three minutes. There's a public hearing for both of them, yes. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public portion, and we will move on to the next public hearing for the NCA, which is the local version of it.
This will be, excuse me, Ordinance 2025-17, to declare the Beaver Creek Community Authority to be organized and a body politic and corporate, to, excuse me, to define the boundary of the authority's new community district, to provide the method of selecting the Board of Trustees of the authority, and fix the surety for their bonds.
So this is the fourth bullet point in the presentation, so after the hearing on the petition itself, the local government can pass an ordinance legislation to create the NCA. If you want to go to the next slide. So new community authority has multiple powers. It can purchase real estate and property, it can prove and sell property, it can provide recreation, educational, health, social, vocational, and cultural activities, it can collect fees to cover programs, it can enforce a collection of the community development charge, on which there will be one for this development as well, and they can issue debt and pay cost of operation and maintenance. If you want to go to the next slide. So I've mentioned there's a community development charge that runs with an NCA. It runs with the land. It is not a property tax, but if a property owner does not pay the community development charge, a lien can be placed on the property. And once again, that can be used to pay debt services on bonds, or the cost of operating or maintaining community facilities. If you want to go to the next slide. Last meeting, we talked about, we had the ordinance for the TIF, the first reading. NCAs are often combined with TIFs, and NCAs are usually done because they can add additional revenue to the TIF, and there's a lot more flexibility in what NCA funds can be used for, while a TIF has to be used for infrastructure, and NCA is more open and can be used for other things like maintaining programs. If you want to go to the next slide. This is the same development as the TIF proposal, so this information is not new until we get to the bottom, two bullet points. It's 121 homes. The average home value is $550,000. I think that should be considered the lowest amount that the homes will probably sell for, with a total project value of, that's the minimum sold for every home, of $66,550,000. The community development charge for these homes will be 4.5 mils for a 30-year period. Estimated revenue is going to be larger than $3 million. That's a very, very conservative estimate. That considers us selling the homes for the absolute lowest amount that they would sell for. I think it's important to note that the petition in here was filed by the developers, so they're obviously well-aware of the NCA and the charges that are going to be charged to the homeowners who are purchasing the homes. And another critically important thing is that the homeowners, before they purchase the homes, will know that there is a 4.5 mil, 30-year community development charge that's going to be attached to their property. So if they do not want to pay that, they simply don't have to buy a home. It's one of those things that, you know, the buyer is aware of before the purchase. So this will provide, obviously, additional revenue for the city that we can use for improvements near the area. for the city that we can use for improvements near the area. I know that we had talked in, in the past about potential improvements to the Park District, but they, the funds, there'll be a seven-person board that will determine what those funds are used for. Of the seven-person board, four of the members are selected by the city. So a majority of the members are selected by the city. So the presumption is that what they decide will be appropriate for the city and beneficial for the city. So I'm recommending approval of the, the NCA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, now, this is a public hearing, so I'm opening it for public input. If you'd like to come forward and speak to this, please state your name, address. You have three minutes. Or you can have time given to you, up to nine.
I'm Trout, 2187 Bassett Court, here in Beaver Creek. I am very concerned with this 4.5 mil assessment on homeowners, whether they be future, but they're going to be a part of our community. That's approximately $1,000 a year per household for 30 years. And they don't even know what they're going to be putting their money to. That is wrong, fundamentally wrong. Additionally, there's an opportunity that says after 30 years without approval of, without the approval of the city, that they could extend it. So if that is the case, then is this a perpetual means of financing stuff that this, the city council thinks is important? That's what the city residents are for. If you want to do something, you'd need to go to the residents. You don't need to take something like this and abuse our new incoming resident, residence, excuse me, and take it for 30 years. That means for 30 years, they've got $1,000 a year coming out that they would probably try and save if they wanted to do improvements to their home or anything else like that. This is fundamentally against good order and very inconsiderate to our new, new future residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, open up the council. Mr. Curran?
Pardon me. Mr. Lowensbury, can you just give us a backdrop in Ohio where other municipalities have used an NCA?
So they're becoming more and more popular, but it has to be developer-driven since they're the ones who generally file the petition for it. So other communities like Huber Heights, these are very popular. They're used quite, quite a bit. This would be the first for the city of Beaver Creek. But this is created by Ohio statute. It's used by communities throughout, throughout Ohio. To just address one of the comments that was made about this being extended beyond the 30-year timeframe, under the state law, that's allowed, but in this particular case, it's not. It's going to be 4.5 mils. It's going to be 30 years. It cannot be extended. Once again, the property owners will know that in advance and decide whether or not they build their home with that knowledge, with that foreknowledge before they do so.
Do you happen to know of any NCAA, sorry, NCA wherein the development hasn't sold within a reasonable amount of time?
I'm not aware of any. I, I can't think of one where they thought they were going to do an NCA, and there wasn't a huge demand for the homes, and they didn't build them as expected. Now, I, my experience doesn't date back to the housing crisis.
Sure.
So has there ever been one where the, I'm sure that there, there could have been, but I'm not familiar with anyone.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything.
Vice Mayor Bales?
Well, I just think that this is important for us to acknowledge that we are seeking alternate sources of revenue to help with infrastructure needs without burdening the taxpayer outside of this development. It is a choice for the taxpayers who buy a property here. They know what they're buying. It's going to be a beautiful community. And this is a way that we can see some improvements around it at no cost to the rest of our citizens. So I am very supportive.
One question I had is about the committee that is appointed. Are you, is it, is it appropriate for us to suggest names or tonight, or?
Well, I should have mentioned that to begin with. We need to insert names in Section 6. And those can be added tonight, and they can be added at the second reading. Those would not be such a significant change as to require additional readings beyond that. But we do need to fill that in, in Section 6. D is one that's a representative of local government, but there is three positions that are citizen members who are not members of local government that we need to put in, in names. And we, we had talked to bond council about that in particular, whether we could just name titles. And the answer is no. We have to list, for the, for the representative from local government, we have to list specific people.
Okay. Well, so you don't need this, but you do not need the city representative, only the city citizen representatives?
Well, I need all four. All four filled in. And that can either be done tonight or, like I said, at a different reading.
Okay. Well, I would make a, a recommendation to list the Parks and Recreation and Culture Director as the city representative, as well as citizen representatives of Christina Heaton, Candy Meyer, and Doug Getz.
Second that, Your Honor.
Yeah, so that would be a motion to amend the ordinance to add those names into A, B, C, and D of Section 6.
Motion to amend as stated?
Move to amend.
Need a second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to amend the ordinance to reflect Vice Mayor Bales' motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now... Anything else that you have?
No. I'll motion to move ordinance 25-17.
Hang on, just one minute. Is this kind of like an HOA, basically?
Somewhat.
Somewhat in terms of the collection of money and the spending of money, but not with all the regulations and limitations, but yes.
A lot of it's dictated by who lives there in the community.
In terms of when you buy your house and you know it exists, and you know you're going to have to pay fees, absolutely the same thing. Citizens are supposed to be aware of those things. And while any, anyone who's buying a home should be aware of those things when they purchase the home and know what their obligations are going to be beforehand.
Okay. Because I know I spend a whole lot more than $1,000 a year on my HOA, so.
Make a motion to move ordinance 25-17 as amended to a second reading?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 25-17 to a second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Ordinance 25-14.
Ordinance 25-14, creating the Grange Hall Road Tax Increment Financing Incentive Districts, excuse me, declaring improvements to the parcels within each incentive district to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments, and specifying the public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve parcels in the incentive districts.
This is a second reading. Anything else from staff?
Nothing has changed, no.
Counsel?
No.
Motion to approve ordinance 25-14?
Second.
Good. All right. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 25-14. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Ordinance 25-18.
Ordinance 25-18, an ordinance determining to proceed with the acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public improvements in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, in cooperation with the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District, and declaring an emergency.
Again, this is a second reading of this particular ordinance. Anything else from staff?
Again, no changes.
Counsel?
I think it's important, again, to note, Your Honor, that we're, we're not in any way responsible financially. We collect it for that particular district, and then they are able to go ahead with their project.
We're basically just a pass-through.
And it's a great community partner as well.
Mayor, I'd motion to approve ordinance 25-18 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 25-18 as an emergency. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilmember Dur?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bales?
Yes.
Mayor Adams?
Yes. Ordinance 25-19, which is kind of a partner to this, so.
Ordinance 25-19, an ordinance levying special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, in cooperation with the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District, authorizing and approving an emergency, or an energy project cooperative agreement by and among the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District, Dayton Raiders Facilities, Inc., and IR Capital Funding LLC, providing for the financing of those public improvements, authorizing and approving a special assessment agreement by and between the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, the County Treasurer of Green County, Green County, Ohio, Dayton Raiders Facilities, Inc., the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District, and IR Capital Funding LLC regarding those special assessments and declaring an emergency.
Boy, now that's a mouthful. Anything else from staff?
Once again, no changes from the last meeting.
Counsel?
Motion to approve 25-19, Your Honor, as an emergency. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 25-19 as an emergency. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Dur?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bales?
Yes.
Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Resolution 25-24.
Resolution 25-24, a resolution directing the Green County Auditor to enter the cost of overgrown grass cutting on the tax duplicate for the properties described in Exhibit A.
Mr. Burkett?
Evening, Mayor, members of City Council. As City Council is aware, there's an ordinance 90, or Section 97-10 and 11, and our code of ordinances limit grass and weeds to be 10 inches within, on private property. And if it goes over 10 inches, there's a process by which the city places a sign. If it's not mowed within five days, we go out and mow it, and then pass those charges on to the property owner. At the end of the year, there's a handful of, of properties that we haven't got payment from. So every year we ask to put those on to the tax rolls for next year so that the auditor can assess those on the property that haven't paid. So this year, there's 21 properties, 21 parcels that did not reimburse the city. And the total for the, we're asking the auditor to put liens on is for $8,825. Staff recommends approval of the resolution. We have to answer any questions.
Any questions from counsel?
Have you resolved any since this was published?
Not that I'm aware of.
How many properties pay their bill compared to the ones who, who don't?
Now, this represents less than 10%, probably closer to 5%. I mean, we have, most of the properties, 65, 70% will actually mow it when we put the sign out. And then 30, 35% we have to go out and mow, and then 5% or 8% is what we see here. So we have fairly good compliance record.
Wonderful. Motion to approve Resolution 25-30, 24?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution, excuse me, 25-24. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution 25-25. Mr. Graham?
Resolution 25-25, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies, and certifying them to the county auditor.
So as part of the normal tax budget process, the County Budget Commission is statutorily required to certify the rates to each subdivision, and we have to accept those rates. This is that formality of us saying, yes, we are accepting the rates that you have established for the city, which were authorized by the voters. There are no changes except for those authorized rates and the inside village, but it's technically not authorized by the voters.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 25-25.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 25-25. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 25-26.
Resolution 25-26, a resolution authorizing the submittal of applications for federal infrastructure investment and jobs act funds through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission.
We get everybody tonight, don't we?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. This evening, I have before you the resolution, as was stated by Ms. Haynes, that for the applications to MVRPC, for the IIJA, it's a mouthful. So, application, for their solicitation process. So as was stated, IIJA stands for Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. That's the federal transportation act that we have different types of funding that we can go for underneath that act. There are three of them. They are the Surface Transportation Program, as we call the SDP program, Transportation Alternatives, or TA, and Carbon Reduction, which is the CR. These funds are handled through MVRPC, and they solicit around this time every year, and they are due in October. For this application round, we are allowed to have two SDP projects. One of them could be a normal SDP, which is widening, any, widening, resurfacing other road projects. One is a resurfacing only with the caveat they can have curb replacements or sidewalk in there as well as part of that maintenance for the resurfacing. So the CR and TA, we can have two combined projects for a total of four. There's also spending caps for the federal funds on these, each of these types of projects. SDP, the normal projects, is $3 million. Resurfacing is $1 million, and the CR and TA is $500,000. These applications must also follow the MVRPC and ODOT Complete Streets policy, or request exemptions for each. And we also must rank each of these to put forward with MVRPC for project priority. This year, we have three applications that we are looking at submitting. The first one is the Haynes Road Resurfacing. It's an SDP resurfacing. The second is the Grange Hall Road Sidewalk Project. And the third is the Miami Valley Road Resurfacing Project, which is a normal SDP project. And I'll get into some more details here in just a second. The first is the Haynes Road Resurfacing. So that's Dayton-Zenia, as you can see in the bottom of the screen, in the map, all the way up to Kemp Road. That is roughly 2.1 miles of roadway. This would upgrade the existing curb ramps at some of the intersections that have curb and sidewalk to meet ADA requirements. Some, as I stated earlier, some sidewalk repair is needed. This project, we are wanting, we are requesting to rank as number one. Total cost- Total cost is roughly one point three seven, seven million. Federal portion for this, we are looking to do a sixty forty match to try to maximize our scoring for this project with MVRPC. So that federal portion would be seven hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars, the remainder being local match. This also would need a complete streets exemption because it is resurfacing. So it would be that exemption number four, which is resurfacing and maintenance only. The second project is the Grange Hall Road Sidewalk. This would run from eight thirty-five Research Boulevard to Creekside Trail up along the west side of the roadway. With that one, there is also curb gutter and storm sewer that would be included with that. This project would be as number two. Total cost, eight hundred and seventeen million. I'm sorry, I said million. I meant eight hundred and seventeen thousand.
That's an expensive sidewalk.
Federal portion is seventy-five percent for construction and engineering, for a total of federal request of four hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Local match, twenty-five percent would be a hundred and fifty-six thousand. And then for design and right of way, it'd be a hundred and ninety thousand is our estimate. And I'll go back here, too. It does say, right of way and design is a hundred percent local. We are not going for federal funds for either of those portions of the project. The last one is the Beaver Valley Road Resurfacing. So this would take place from Hazel Drive up to Bandit Trail. North of Bandit Trail, we did resurfacing with the local annual program a few years ago. South of Hazel, we have a project to widen and salt sidewalk from Hazel down to Dayton-Zenia. That's forthcoming. This project is roughly point eight nine miles, and this also includes some curb ramp upgrades to ADA requirements. The sidewalk out there is actually side path that's asphalt. So if I needed to do work out there, that would be something that would be included in the sidewalk or the side path resurfacing as part of the annual resurfacing program. This project is ranked number three for us this year. Total cost, nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred. Federal, we are looking at eighty percent with a roughly two hundred and, or excuse me, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand for that grant and a local portion of a hundred and eighty-one thousand. Once again, design for this would be a hundred percent local at about fifty thousand. This one would also be a complete street exemption of number four for resurfacing and maintenance only for this project. So summarize this. We have three applications, as I stated. The ranks are provided below for each project. And the complete streets exemptions are also provided below for each of the project, as was stated previously. The next steps are the council approval for the attached resolution before you this evening, and staff has recommended approval.
Thank you very much. Any input from counsel?
I do have one question. On the Beaver Valley one, when would that funding come in and how would that marry up with the southern portion where we're doing the widening in terms of timing?
Sure. So the Hazel, Dayton-Zenia to Hazel, I believe, is twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-eight. This, this funding is available two thousand and thirty to two thousand and thirty-one. So we'd be looking at those somewhere in that year. So that's why we're looking at getting to this now, because the road is not in horrible shape yet, and we want to make sure we stay ahead of that and can get ahead and not have it get really bad, so.
And is that the same timing on all three of these projects?
It is, correct, yeah.
Thank you.
All these projects make sense. Thank you for your work. Haynes Road, I think desperately needs it. Really glad to see the sidewalk potentially at Grange Hall. We've talked about that for this area for three, four years now at least. And so that'd be really, really nice to connect to the bike path. And with Beaver Valley resurfacing being done further north recently, I mean, I think it'd be very nice to have that entire road complete, but timing, alas, but thank you for all that you do. Thank you, Mayor.
I agree with the comments. I have one question on Beaver Valley Road. Because this application won't come to fruition even if we're successful for five or six years, there's kind of a dip in the road at Obet's in Beaver Valley, I think it is, that's when you're traveling south. I think we should probably address that sooner rather than later, but.
Sure. Mr. Bales, I can look into that, and that's something that we could definitely look at potentially doing as part of the annual resurfacing program ahead of that time, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Timetable on the south part, again, that's the joint township city portion?
That is, Mr. Curran. That's two thousand and twenty-eight is construction for that one.
Okay. The whole thing?
Yes, yeah.
Phil Anderson, you got something?
Yeah, just to remind City Council that, you know, when we're talking twenty thirty-one, twenty thirty-two, we have a five-year levy of a budget. The fifth year of the levy for streets is twenty twenty-seven. Anything beyond that, we also have potential changes in property taxes coming up. So anything beyond twenty twenty-seven or beyond next year potentially, you know, that these may not come to pass. Or if they do come to pass, we may have to deny them because we won't have the cash match. As you see, these are great, great, this is what we've been doing, engineering has been doing for years and years, and leveraging those grant funding dollars for grant dollars, which have been phenomenal. We're in excess of over a hundred and twenty million dollars of grant funding since ninety-seven. But, you know, things, like I said, every time, every year, we're going to have to probably start pulling back as it's unknown what's going to happen because we, we already, we're pretty full right now, if I'm correct, Mr. Smith, with the funding that far out that we're already, if you will say, budgeted with what we assume we will have at that time, not having any extra dollars beyond our twenty twenty-seven budget timeframe. Because that, that funding will not grow. It'll stay stagnant with just very little, one to maybe two percent growth. So just important to note that as we look forward, it is very hard to plan for capital such as this, as capital projects in the future, not knowing with our main and primary revenue source what it is and what's going to happen to it. So just wanted to make a bullet point on that.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, but I think we need to move forward because we just can't assume the worst, so we have to.
That's right.
Yeah.
Not in mind, I motion to improve resolution twenty-five dash twenty-six.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty-six. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-seven.
Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-seven. A resolution authorizing the submittal of an application for funding through the Ohio Public Works Commission state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Yeah, staff has recently notified that the Ohio Public, Ohio Public Works Commission will be accepting new grant applications beginning in about two weeks here. Upon getting that notice, we evaluated our current programs, what's, what's needed, future funding needs and such. At the end of that evaluation, we're recommending submitting an application for the Kemp Road Widening Project. This is an existing project where we already secured federal funding for this, where these OPWC funds will be used to match with the federal funds to reduce the city share to build this project. And again, the project is located again along Kemp Road, just to the west of North Fairfield Road, primarily in front of Shaw School. On either end of the project, Meadow Court, it's already built to three lanes with full pedestrian facilities. To the east of Blue Wing, it's already three lanes. So we're essentially meeting the ends of the project and continuing that same section all the way through there. Again, just a little bit of background on it. We originally applied for this project back in twenty twenty and received the approval of the grant application in twenty-one. Our MVRPC funding is one point eight million plus dollars for this project. Again, we're going to apply the same treatment we've done throughout many roadways in the city with this project to upgrade the three lanes, curb, storm sewer, pedestrian facilities, et cetera. As far as project schedule, we're planning on beginning purchasing land for right of way in twenty twenty-six, and construction is currently planned for twenty twenty-seven. The proposed application is going to request nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And again, that would be matched with the federal money. So the city, if the application is successful, the city's share of this work would be reduced by that amount of money. And just a little summary here. If the application is successful, this would be the funding breakdown where between the federal monies from MVRPC and the OPWC, we'd be about fifty-nine percent of the project cost would be covered with those grant sources. And you can see the total cost right now is estimated to be four point eight million dollars. And with that, happy to answer any questions?
Going to be tight.
Yes, sir. It's very tight here. Those houses.
It's really a challenge going down there. I know attending the citizen open house that you had.
Yeah, we're working really hard. I know Nick and the consultant worked very hard to lay that out where you can go.
Guys have a challenge, that's for sure.
It's a tough one.
Regarding the timeline with the elementary school right there and, you know, not being able to wave a magic wand when to get people out, but, you know, ideally, what, what is your plan in terms of the timeline? Because it's an extremely busy area with, when the elementary schools.
It certainly is. But unfortunately with, with construction, there's a set period of the year when we can actually do that work, where once you get past, say, like Thanksgiving, it gets kind of dicey, and over the winter, we obviously can't do much. So unfortunately, we're going to have to coordinate closely with the schools, kind of like we did this year with the other projects at Fairwood and Main Elementary and others, yes.
I think it's desperately needed because, and it's exciting to see the completion of Kemp Road because it's coming along very, very nicely. But that is a particularly busy area, and it is much needed, so. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
And Councilmember Duer would know that because I saw he and his wife jogging on my way to work just recently, so. Right down that area. I just want to continue my thanks for looking for these grant opportunities. You know, we, we have to try to find funding sources wherever we can, and the fact that the city is paying less than fifty percent of this project is tremendous, and it is much needed. So thank you for that, and thank you to your staff for that.
Thank you.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty-seven?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty-five dash twenty-seven. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Decision item. You have nothing for this?
Yes, every year, the, the Tax Incentive Review Committee of Green County meets to review all incentives, tax, TIFs and CRAs and enterprise zones that are enacted throughout the county. And they make recommendations to each of the jurisdictions where those incentive districts are in operation, whether to continue or not to continue the incentive district. In Beaver Creek, our one incentive district this year is the Green TIF. They looked at the financials of the TIF and going through that. This year, or in twenty twenty-five, the revenues collected from the taxes for the Green TIF is three hundred and thirty-six thousand. You combine that with a agreed-upon three hundred thousand dollar payment that the county does every year, and subtract what was paid on the, the TIF debt, five hundred and thirty-three thousand. There's a surplus that went to the TIF fund of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. In total, that surplus balance is about one point one three million dollars. The TIF is scheduled to be paid off in two twenty thirty-one, and so it has a remaining balance with interest of about three point two million dollars. The Tax Incentive Review Committee reviewed all this and made a recommendation to that City Council continue the TIF for another year, and staff is making that same recommendation. The motion found within your staff report outlines the needed action from City Council. And again, staff has recommended approval of this motion. Happy to answer any questions?
I have a motion?
Motion to accept Tax Incentive Review Committee recommendation to continue the Green Town Center TIF.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue the Green Town Center TIF. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Is it really council time already? Goodness gracious. Let's start with Mayor, or Vice Mayor Bales.
Who, all right. Thank you. I've just got a couple of things. First, I want to thank the citizens who came out last week for the community conversations with council. There was a large group of citizens that attended, and Councilmember Curran handled them all with absolute grace. But the main topic was the senior center and the hours and the cut to the hours. There were some suggestions, a lot of complaints, understandable. And so one of the responses that I gave, and I will advocate for, is that we will talk about it during our budget work sessions as we continue to move forward into twenty twenty-six. The second concern was largely around property taxes, which is, again, kind of no surprise. A lot of the discussion was state-driven property tax issues and how that's all impacted at the school district, much like we talked briefly about last week at our joint session. So it was a good discussion. You know, the bottom line is we have to live within the funding structure that we have right now, but it doesn't mean we can't advocate for change. I think that's the way I'll leave that. After the community conversation was over, I did speak with a couple who live on Autumn Leaf, and they did have some questions, Mr. Mormon, about the improvement that was done with their concrete ditch in their backyard that was a new improvement. Perhaps we can reach out to them, just to, to talk to them once again, to discuss the drainage and so forth. They were a little confused on what could be done, so I'd appreciate that. The second update I have is I attended golf advisory board meeting last week. There were two main topics of the meeting. One was budget twenty twenty-six. Most of that discussion revolved around their operational or capital requests that they will be putting forward. Most of them are necessary, I would say, for, to maintain their, their status quo and operations. One is a knife sharpening tool that sharpens their mower blades, right? So things like that. The second was for some portable fans that improve air movement around greens and tee boxes because they're experiencing some turf issues. And then the third big, and the biggest one in the twenty twenty-six budget proposal will be the fire suppression line at the clubhouse that needs to be replaced because it's gone faulty, and that's a very important thing, so. We'll see that again during our twenty twenty-six budget talks, but I thought I'd bring you up to speed on that. The second topic was twenty twenty-six rates. There was nothing too dramatic. The weekend rates are going to be increasing in twenty twenty-six. But the biggest change, I would say, for the recommendation was to modify what's considered weekday versus weekend. They're, they're changing the weekday rates from, to Monday through Thursday. Weekend rates will be Friday, Saturday, Sunday, which is not uncommon amongst a lot of golf courses. But in Beaver Creek up until now, it had been Monday through Friday and then Saturday and Sunday. So I, the whole committee voted unanimously to pass those recommendations on to. So, I, the whole committee voted unanimously to pass those recommendations on to the city manager. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. First, Vice Mayor Bales, thank you for sharing the input that you received, that you and Councilmember Curran received at the recent Citizen event. I think that's very helpful, and I think it's good to be able to share with the community as well. The only other thing I had is I wanted to thank the mayor, I wanted to thank the police department and everyone involved for the 9/11 ceremony. Once again, it was very well put on, very well done. It was really cool to see the police department with the honor guard. I think that was tremendous, and so very excited about that going forward. So, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Chief, thank you, staff. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Duer.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo Councilwoman Schwartz's comments. The 9/11 memorial was very nicely done. Thank you for your words and for trustee Kreutz as well, and likewise to the police and fire. 24 years later, to remember 2,977 that lost their lives on that day. Also had the opportunity to attend an elementary school back-to-school bash that was very nicely attended. Lot of fun, Kona Ice, bouncy games. I'm in that stage of life where it's a lot of fun. Otherwise, I've been living at Ankeny Soccer Fields, and that's been very enjoyable as well, but we do have the haunted classic soccer tournament coming up in the not-too-distant future, which is always a good reminder in terms of getting in and out of Beaver Creek probably early, just because a lot of people come to town, so... Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And just a continuation of the thing from 9/11, probably another 10,000 have passed away because of that, since that, so... Councilman Curran.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, I would echo Councilmember Duer's comments concerning 9/11. Well done, excellent speech, great presentation, great presentation by fire police department units, and it was very moving, I think. I won't go on. I think Vice Mayor Bales summed up our meeting. We had a spirited meeting, but very eloquently handled. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. It's getting to me very quickly here. Two people gone makes a difference. I have a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to congratulate Steve Click and Joe Moore from the golf course, our two professionals. Steve finished number one, and Joe finished number two in the Southern Ohio PGA Senior Section Championship Golf Hunting a week or so ago, which is really a good feather in their hat, so now they get to go play in the big tournament. And I thank you for the mention of the 9/11 memorial service. I wanted to thank the police department and Community Engagement O'Neil, Officer O'Neil, for putting it together. The honor guard look really good. I can't wait to see them when they get their full uniforms. That'll be really great, but so, thank you for putting that together because I think that's going to be a real addition asset to the department. I was able to attend an open house at Michael's House. For those of you who don't know, that's a childcare advocacy center, and it's actually in Fairborn, but it serves Green County. If you've never been out there, please try to make it a point to go out and visit with them. It's well worth your time and effort to go see them, what they do out there for these kids that are... abused is the best word to use, and, you know, it's just, it's amazing what they do with them. I was also invited to a farewell open house for the president of Soyn and Green. Daniel Tryon left and went on to somewhere else, and they're in the process now of hiring a new one. I noticed earlier when Dr. Maples was speaking, she said something I didn't understand, but you nodded your head. Oh, that's good. Yep. Beaver Creek Student Council invited me to be a part of the Beaver Creek High School Homecoming Parade. That was a lot of fun. I just, but they do toss a lot of candy, and I know the street department's probably not happy with what was remaining there because there's still a mess out there. In this past operation, I was honored to be a part of the Operation Honor Flight that was hosted by the 445th Air Base Wing. They flew 167 veterans to Washington, DC to see the monuments in two C-17s. They were late coming back last night because President Trump came into Andrews, and when he does that, everything shuts down. So, they were about an hour and a half late, but when they came back, it was, it was, it was an emotional time watching these guys. In fact, one of the guys was honored, he's 93 years old, he worked with me at the Wright V Flyer, and he, he was a, worked heavily with airplanes, but he's not been on an airplane since he got out of, especially a military aircraft, since he got out of the service, and still had a great, great time. So, it was really good to see that, so... They had a concert there to keep us all occupied while we waited. Ricky Lee and Montgomery Gentry were there. Lee Greenwood was supposed to be there, but we got upstaged by a situation in Arizona, so he was invited there, so guess where he went? But that's okay. He really needed to be there, so... That's all I have. City Manager.
I just, a few reports tonight, Mayor and Council. Fishing Derby, September 18th through to 25th of September at Dominic Laffino Park. If you saw on the Facebook and other social media, you saw the fish being loaded into the pond, so she's stocked and ready for some fishing. Just don't drop your phone in the lake. I'm talking about a staff member in particular, which will go nameless, Randy. Submissions can be entered into the drawing for prizes such as games, toys, kids' fishing gear, and tickets to local attractions. So, what you'll do is just take a picture, include the child's name, age, parent's name, address, phone number, and date you went to the fishing of the park. And it is catch and release only, so no fish fries here, please. And fishing licenses are not required for children under age of 16. So, great event coming up. Looks like the weather may be cooperating, at least cooling off a little bit. Can't, we need the rains. If it rains, pick a nicer day. Hopefully, it won't rain all, that whole week. Tri-A Truck coming up. It's almost October, hard to believe, but Saturday, October 4th. We have been very, very lucky, knock on wood, for the weather for these events here lately, but we'll kick it off at 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the municipal maintenance facility. All the trucks, we, snow plows, backhoes, police cruisers, all kinds of things, plus some other partners usually come to bring some other unique equipment as well. Beaver Creek Fire Department at the same time will be hosting their open house just up the hill, and all this is free and open to the public. Annual Health Fair at the Autumn Bazaar at the Senior Center will be October 3rd, 9:00 AM to 12:30 PM. So, the health fair will be health information, screenings, flu shots, and other resources for seniors, vendors sell homemade crafts, seasonal decor, and baked goods, and other handcrafted items. Mr. Curran, there's baked goods there, so...
There is.
There you go. Bring that to his attention. Event is free and open to the public and very popular. I just wanted to mention Town Hall that we had on August 27th is on our website plus our YouTube channel, so there's a link on other, in the news under City. I think you click on that article, there's the link to the Town Hall, very, you know, 125 people plus attended, so please share that video. It's factual information about how we're funded and good for the residents to be informed in order to make important decisions in the future. I just wanted to make one more mention, and we, the community, and not just Dayton, but the BBB, the Better Business Bureau, serves the greater Dayton area, including Green County and Beaver Creek. And a dear friend of mine, for 38 years, John North, passed away...
Oh, I'll be darned.
On Saturday.
Gee.
And I've known John. Graduated undergrad together, masters together. Been a dear friend of mine, and he's served very well, his community and his public service in a different, non-governmental way, but definitely to the businesses and the citizens of all the community. So, job well done, John, and I'll see you on the other side. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burkett, are you offering a special award if they catch your phone? All right. At this point, it's time for citizen comments. You just counsel on any subject. You have to come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Afternoon again. Bob Trout, 2187 Bassett Court. And I, since we weren't taking comments, I had to save this to the end. This is on the Grange Hall Road TIF. Section 2 Public Infrastructure Improvements has a statement on there, "Streetlights, gas facilities, electrical facilities, all appearance thereto, and maintenance of roadway improvements within and adjacent to the incentive districts." Going to add on to that, that's too vague for the residents and current and future residents of that area. As a matter of public interest, it was requested to be more definitive on the improvements so that they know what their money is going to, rather than it be a vague slush fund, so to say. So, that's on there. The other thing, did go to the Beaver Creek Pizza Dive Get Together. It was very informative. We had a lot, a lot of stuff covered. I want to thank you too for going because that was a hostile crowd, and you did magnificent as far as being able to sit there, so kudos to you for that. But one of the things that they did recommend, made a comment on, was alternate funding to support the senior center, and one individual did make a comment that there's funding that does go to the Beaver Creek Golf Course, and to keep it solvent, I guess, I don't know, I have not checked into it. And the thought process was maybe take a portion of that money and divert it over because that is also like an important factor as far as it goes. One of the other things I'd like to mention on the TIF, approximately, the houses are going to be, I'm going to estimate about $600,000 each. When you take 35% of that, that gets you to about a 210 assessment, and there's a 72 mil that keys in for Beaver Creek. Basically, they're paying approximately $15,120 tax every year. If you take 70% of that off for the TIF, they're going to be paying approximately $10,600 a year for the TIF. I just want you to know that there's a dollar amount. These people have lives and families to go with, and you're dipping into their pockets far more than I think you should. I've said my piece, but like I said, I would like some information on the expansion on what the meanings of those words are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close the citizen comment portion of the meeting, and Mr. Curran, I think you have something you'd like to say.
Meeting adjourned. A motion to adjourn. Excuse me. I'm sorry.
Well, you're moving right ahead there, aren't you? Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We are adjourned.